And welcome to the November 4th special meeting of the Oregon Board of Education. We will have the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we have the roll call of the board, you might note that Mr. Kennedy is on his computer this evening and Kit attended the meeting, but according to state law, he's allowed to participate, and so he's on computer. Roll call. Mr. Shea?
President.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Mulmar?
Here.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Command of a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to add, me and Mike may add some commentary from our finance committee, since we had the finance committee specifically for this meeting. There's at least one item that's not on the agenda that I'll just briefly address when we do the adjustment to fees.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And I should add, Mrs. Mulmar, that we just put these as discussion points on tonight, but if a motion were to come out on any of them tonight, that's okay, I mean, the board could make the motion if they wanted to vote, or we could just discuss tonight and put a motion on the following meeting, so.
Thank you.
I didn't know how the board wanted to handle that.
Yeah, well, it really is discussion, but if we decipher a vote, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further? Roll call, please. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulmar?
Yes. So we'll move to item five, which is the adjustment to school fees for this year.
So do mine, who's doesn't have, and stuff like that?
Absolutely, absolutely, your committee, thank you.
So Mike and I met with Dean, Helen, Jane to discuss what we were going to do with fees as it relates to the first quarter segment. We weren't in class for that time, so we took the approach, you can see Jane's handout, kind of line by line, elementary facet, anything specific class-wise, we looked at that individually and then just do a across-the-board rationale to that. So you can see in facet, Martin Van is tackled a little bit differently because one's a semester class and one hasn't happened yet. Same with Clay High School, the different classes that have fees associated with it. So everything is just a corrata of the normal fee, and I think Jane has it showed it pretty clearly, that what the base is, what percent of the year or time or its impact, and then the recommended adjustment. So that holds true for the regular fee and career tech fee. On the pay-to-participate more of the sports, we got with each athletic director at Clay in facets and looked at what a regular season, normal season would have been, and then adjusted based on what they played. And to get line by line, so we knew cheer was different than football because they didn't travel to away game. So you can see what we have. Is that right, Jane? Three times? It wasn't a one-way game they didn't go to?
Exactly, and the yellow, of course, is me rounding because I don't want thirty-three cents. I mean, they're coming with cash, so.
No, I'm not worried about that.
I know.
Mostly cheer, we said three out of ten, or mostly football's three out of ten. We didn't have three home games, but did the cheer team travel? I don't believe they traveled.
No, I'm sorry, I got these from Mark. I don't know, I can look at what he sent me. That's where I got them. I don't.
But even on so, I guess I just want to validate.
I'll double-check that. I think I have it listed here.
We have to read home games?
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if that's the question, I wasn't sure, yeah, we absolutely.
Three home.
Correct.
Yeah, so okay, so this follows through with that same philosophy that you can see JB was a little different. Again, even if it was one game, just like in soccer or and stuff like that, if it was one game, we adjusted for one game. So that's true. The only one I had a question, I just sent an email before the meeting, was cross-country and facet, I think, anders that normal season would be seven and we had six.
I fixed that. Did you look?
Yeah, I fixed it.
Okay, this is probably the one I printed out from nothing. So that's the last now. We took line by line, what happened, and we kept it, the philosophy consistent through everything and didn't just say, well, one game was missed, well, pay for it. Consistent through the whole thing, so no one's shooting, that's all right. So that's kind of our recommendation to the board that we can go down at the next regular meeting, but I'll leave it open for discussion. Now, that was the philosophy.
I have a quick question. I was looking at the band fees. I think we had discussed in the past a difference in those fees.
Which one specific? Does all of them acquire the marching and symphonic or?
We addressed marching band, well, whether you split it up with concert band or symphonic band, it was to cover a lot of the cost for the uniforms.
They've got a separate fee for that.
Right, but I didn't know if that's considered in this fee or if it's separate. Okay, but we had talked about the band fee being like seventy versus the twenty, whatever, twenty-one dollars that it was.
So the twenty, so the choir, we looked at that one and they didn't do anything for the post-quarters, or we reduced that by twenty-five percent. The marching band, concert marching band, we said they only performed at.
You know what? You know what happened? Was it in that discussion, but I know we had already approved these, and then we turned around and approved the others at the next board meeting. Let me take a look if we need to cancel these out. I called it, I didn't think of that, so we'll take.
Is that the ninety-five dollar uniform fee?
The, I don't know, I figured it was.
It's to help cover that, but.
Yeah.
Because the ninety-five dollars for band people.
And we were leaving that alone, but if we should wipe these out, we should wipe them.
Oh, they still use, they still use the uniform. So it still, so that still needs to be cleaned. I don't know what else falls into that fee in general.
Right.
That ninety-five.
So that would be just the marching band one, right? It's different than symphonic? Or do they use?
They use, they use the uniforms.
For both?
Yes, for both.
Okay. Then let's, we'll take a look at those and see what we need to do. That could be one thing that we can talk about. Okay, thank you.
Hey Jeff, I'm double-thinking. Maybe it was the Finley game that was home canceled. I just texted our A.D.
Okay.
So I'm.
But that's what I got from him. He said three play ten.
He did, yeah, I got that.
Now I'm mixed up. It was a home or away game. Did we make one up?
Because we said we played three, but I swear home was an away game.
We played three at home.
Because the band.
We did.
We did three home. I started making two times.
Did you watch?
I was all, I was at all three.
Well, because I know at least from the band stage, because the sophomore, juniors, and seniors played one, the freshmen.
Right, there was different makeups each day.
And the third game, all, all.
Yeah, great, so I was thinking, right, but then I started that question.
The only other thing we really need to clarify, I think, is that the career tech fees. Mr. Zabisky?
So that one we talked about and said, really, a lot of those, some of them, a lot of them came in and did some, I'd say the beginning of the year work, testing, draft supplies, and so those, that stuff they use all year round and take away with them. So the kind of part of it is the buying the stuff, so they keep it, so. And they did come in and take, for the ones that had to have the test in the beginning, they took those tests, so it was, I won't say business as usual for them, but it was close to the business as usual for them.
It's like the cosmetology gets their mannequin's heads and so forth, so those fees are still there.
Yeah, I believe that you had conversations with Mrs. Ben, right? Went through program by program, so. So I think this certainly, I think the committee did a good job meeting the spirit of, I think, the idea that we were remote for so long and going through, taking an honest approach at it. I think the only, the only question moving forward is, you know, how do we handle additional changes if they were to hit a district? You know, I mean, I don't have the answer, I just think it's a discussion point to at least bring up. Because if we were to go remote again, or something were to make that happen, you know, do we come back and then adjust these? And I guess what I'm worried about is adding and then subtracting and then adding and then subtracting or something like that for our families as well. So I know Mr. Kennedy brought this up originally, saying we didn't want to stick our families with big bill at the end of the year or something like that, but on the other side, I don't want them to pay ahead and then we've got to refund, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people money. And it's, it just becomes very hard advantage, so I'm just sharing that. I don't know what I'm even asking or not asking. Maybe, you know, I don't know what the right answer for that is, unless we take it by semester, maybe, and I don't even know.
Well, the one thing that we were talking about moving forward is second quarter, we started high grad and then went fall, so people will be asking, is there a somewhat of reduction for those two weeks or a month or whatever that was? In that fall, but not fully remote either. The other thing is, as far as paying, I mean, there's no cost for the, you know, Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no cost to them to make the payment, because they can pay twenty dollars a month, thirty dollars, as they can to work down and maybe not pay off the whole balance at one time in case there are further adjustments.
That's true. Also, if we need to, before the next meeting, I'll work with Nate, we'll talk about how we adjust the fees in power schools. And this is going to be a huge, I mean, just the end of the year, we've had more refunds than I've ever done. And we're going to have huge amounts of refunds, and there needs to be a point where unless it's five dollars or less, we may not, we may just hold it for next year unless you're senior or unless you transfer out. Unless there's a real need, because truthfully, we'll end up with all these checks that won't be cashed. That means people just don't cash full checks. So I think we need to talk about it. I'm not saying we won't refund it. I just think we need to talk about it. That's all I'm saying. And we can always put it over to athletic fees. I mean, that's what I prefer to do, first take a shift and move everything to what they might owe for athletics. And then see what's left and, you know.
But we can make a blanket statement saying, say, all athletic fees are adjusted, please pay them accordingly.
Yeah, or we can.
And other fees are adjusted, feel free to make payments, to pay them and make payments moving forward. If anything changes, we will adjust again, which may require a refund.
Yeah.
But I do think it's important that we kind of put that out there, that parents need to pay for the fall sports fees.
No, the fall sports fees, but I would even hold off a second because we can put some of these extra monies that they've already paid on the fall sports. A lot of the people have already paid. So once we get that adjusted, then they can look in and see how much they owe, still owe, and it will help.
And you're saying they've already paid the full amount prior to the season starting?
Not, we only have one, two people that paid full athletic participation fees. I'm talking about the regular fees. And we can, and if I know they're going to be reduced by this amount so far, they might have extra money that they can throw onto their pay to participate once those are entered. And then they pay less, and we're shooting less money back and forth. It's not a problem. And we can shoot it back regardless, don't get me wrong, it's just if we could give some deadlines to people so that, you know, we can make it simpler for everyone.
I do want to make notes, I've had a couple of questions. If they've already paid, they won't get a refund, we'll be able to apply it to.
Yes, yes, yes.
Future fees.
Yeah, they just sent the email and said, hey, can this be applied? Well, gladly. In fact, we'll probably just take care of it.
I assume at some point now after the, maybe when we vote, not to meet, you'll put out some kind of district communication regarding fees, and we'll sum my other thing in one communication.
Yeah, we certainly could do that. Just got a text from one of Mr. Quigg, actually, because he's probably watching. He said, band students are all charged ninety dollars. So.
So maybe we didn't even charge these. I'm sorry, even on the original, I just went right off the agenda.
Original agenda, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess that one's, what does that fee for? I know part of it is uniforms, so.
Seventy was uniform and twenty was probably for the directly. So we can adjust that, yeah. Thank you.
Well, and for the unique situation that we're in this year, I mean, generally, we charge, like athletics, we charge the pay-to-play fees upfront. We just change that to doing it at the end of the season, once we know what type of season there actually was.
For the, for each season?
So do you like the fall? We don't have to put the fees off the now or when the season begins.
For winter.
Yeah, we can put, not load anything until the end of the season when we know.
Well, I'd almost rather they load them and then we can pay part of them off, and then we can go in and take off what we know. You know what I mean? Because that gives us place to put money. But we ask them, just like now, we only had two people paying because we told them, don't pay. So that's all we have to do, is make it clear.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we don't pay, so for the lower scores.
Don't pay, yeah.
They don't pay until the end of the season when we have a, we actually know how many games we participated in. I mean, two days in and JB's for a game, right, so.
Exactly.
We're going to have these issues throughout the season.
And we had them last spring, and we refunded them all, so I think, you know, that's a good way to handle it, just pull off, yeah.
So is there any other fees besides that ninety-dollar band fee that people think we may have missed?
What?
We had to watch through the approved list up on the minutes when we did the mass one and tried to make sure we hit everyone, so I don't think there's anything else missing.
I just think we're done with hitting the bands, so we'll take this, these two out and replace the twenty-dollar one. Is the symphonic band, was that canceled as well?
Well, it's.
The second part of the year.
Right, so what is considered, you know, marching band season, and then you have either concert or.
So they all had to pay ninety and twenty of a grand three one or the other? And if they're in both seasons, they want to pay twenty-one, so. Okay, I want to make sure I understood that. All right, thank you. Makes sense.
So I think we, you know, with that, I think we can move this forward to the next regular agenda. Work out some of those little issues about paying, payment, how would you think, and then we can have a communication ready to go out after the next board meeting, so everyone know what our process was and how we can go about paying or refunding or applying to other fees.
So again, I'll bring up, once we approve this, are we are we readjusting the adjusted fees each? I mean, is that what we're looking at doing?
Maybe the finance committee can get back to the end of the second quarter and look at anything that we want to do anything for the high grade, if anything else happened during the year, and do the same process each quarter.
Well, but that's my point, so let's just use the elementary general fee. So if, if at the end of the year they only owe ten dollars,
I've made like two, three separate.
Why would we, why would we ask them to pay thirty-three now? And I know what you're saying, Jeff, you're saying, well, they have.
We can put the corret portion, I mean, I mean.
Or are we just, are we just approving like a new updated fee schedule, which makes sense based on each quarter? And then we're asking people to still hold off and pay at the end if that's what works for them? Which would be, you know, in case there's future adjustments? You know, and that those though that are worried that they might have a big bill at the end, then maybe they, you know, we work with them individually and say, well, let's just, let's set up a, maybe a plan that could help you. I don't know, I'm just thinking aloud, and then if we do need to refund, at least it was an individual plan that maybe Jane or, I don't know.
I'd almost rather not charge anything for some of those than to, do you know what I mean, like?
Well, yeah, there's a lot to this, that's what I'm saying. This is a very fluid.
And I don't know if our system allows us to do Q1 fees, Q2 fees, and break it up into quarterly amounts? And have them pay that way, or is it just one bucket amount?
We'd have to add a bunch of, like, I mean, I'm sure, well, Nate knows the system better than I do, but we'd have to list them differently because now we put them in a system as elementary fee or co-fee, school fees, but we'd have to list them as first quarter, you know, we'd have to have four where one is.
Right.
It's there if we just pay.
I mean, that's a option moving forward for this year, maybe even actually, who knows? You know, I'm not going to back end it is, but it would clean things up for the parents. And make it easy for them to see.
Yeah.
Well, that might be then, because each of these categories that are here, the fees, are a little bit different. That would make a lot of sense for like the general elementary Eisenhower facet, you know, the the simple divide by four, you pay it if we're here, you don't pay if you don't, that's easy. Career tech would probably be the same.
Career tech would just.
Is what I'm hearing anyways. I'm not hearing a big change there. It might be a little bit difficult with some of these art classes and band classes at Clay. And then, and then sports, I guess could go by season.
I mean, they tend to do anyways, when you.
And we usually ask them to pay before they play, but this is okay, this, we have to do it this way, for sure. I almost think we almost should charge the career tech program fees and the pay to participate.
Hold off on the.
Hold off on the others and see if there is a way we can do it quarterly. But I, we'll, we'll, we'll look at this. I'll talk to Nate and we'll work.
So maybe we take what we've done already, just take it one step, maybe categorize things a little bit differently, that can go into quarters. Like, these are fees for the first, first fall season sport, that makes sense, easy.
Yeah.
It's done, so that's easy. We do the same thing that at the end, that's easy.
And that's really not that many fees left, or are they the real, I'm forgetting, or the real expensive ones, I'm not trying to minimize, if you have several kids in the district, but it's not quite as, you know, the pay to participate and the career tech fees are usually our most expensive ones.
So is there another finance committee meeting that wants to take a look at this, or is this?
We're having another meeting at twelve, but that's for the five-year fourteen.
Okay.
But we can add the.
We can add this or something.
You know, maybe we just, you know, we kind of think that through, put something together, present it to you and the committee, just, which we really just kind of talked about, we just kind of set the categories in a way, pretty easy. So, okay, I feel better if that's how we can approach a couple of these. Good.
Okay, any further discussion on item five? Okay, then let's move to item six, substitute teacher compensation.
So this is another one that the finance committee talked about. And we refined with increasing it from the hundred to the hundred and twenty-five days, and the approach we took was this is, this will be the first, start of the pay, I think there's eleven-five days, right, but the first pay period, the start of the pay period after we approve it. We will make it one-twenty-five, and that is good through five-twenty-eight or the end of the school year. And then we can revisit at the end of the school year if we want to keep that one-twenty-five, change it permanently, or do another temporary inquiry, but the recommendation is we increase it to one-twenty-five for that first, the start of the first pay period after we approve it.
How does this put us regionally from a compensation standpoint to help lure some individuals?
Oh, it's good.
It'll be the highest that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I.
Will we actually average at a hundred or will we lower highs?
We had, we had just raised it from ninety to a hun, ninety or ninety-five to a hundred.
Ninety.
A year, ninety to a hundred maybe a year ago.
Some of the bigger cities.
And we were right there at the average at the hundred. So I think, I mean, I think we're, we're certainly, we're, the reason we're doing it is supply and demand. And we certainly need to cover our classes to keep our kids at school, and I think this is a very wise move at this point in time. I don't know how many of our subs truly sub in different school districts here, but, but we might be able to attract some that are in other school districts that live nearby that can come over and, and help us at a higher rate. I know we'll be able to once.
Do we know any other districts have it, that it's temporarily adjusted?
I'm not aware of any, no, but I have.
Our story it is, I know.
Our story.
Actually, I gave you the idea, because I had some of that, I thought, I think a way to try to attract people. It will be, the committee asked that it be reviewed again if the other's clear. This is not necessarily going to be the right next year, but these are unusual times.
And I do know the other school districts who have been recruiting our regular subs.
Yeah, like GPS pays a lot higher, I don't know, I don't know the rates exactly what they are, but but I don't know if it's this high, but this is definitely was a solid competitive area for the remainder of this year. That, that'll help out, I hope tremendously. And, and, you know, we put out that, I'll call for subs, and, and it's, it's generated at least eight people, which is a lot. I mean, I would like more, but because some of those are only, they can only do certain days, but there was a few that could do every day, and that's still, that really not.
No, just a quick note, and I'm not your decision, but if it's approved, this is approved tonight.
Yes.
It would start November thirteenth. That would be the next pay period. Okay, so just so you're aware.
And we, so we pay weekly?
Bi-weekly. But, but our pay ends the Friday, Thursday before payday. Payday is established.
Well, I don't care about payday, I want to know the start of the pay period.
That's what I'm telling you, eleven-thirteenth is the start.
Well, how, why do you got eleven-five down now then?
This is after the board meeting. You said the pay period after the board meeting.
Right, so eleven-five isn't a start of the pay period.
No, you wanted to start, so if we're doing it today, so eleven-six, like, well, no, it was last thirty.
He wants it the start of the.
The first day of the next pay period.
Would be, that would be the thirtieth, so that would be before the board meeting.
No, the first, the start of the first pay period after we approve it.
If we approve it tonight, I think it's the thirteenth.
It's the thirteenth.
We're planning on, we're planning on discussing, right, that's why I should put that there.
I, I don't know where you have.
No, the, we pay bi-weekly, and so the last, next pay period, the pay period we're in right now ends November twelfth, and so the November thirteenth would be the next pay period. If you want it to start November fifth or sixth, I don't care, but.
No, you have a fifth on you, that's why I was trying to figure out all the next ones.
Where's the fifth written?
I don't have a fifth written.
In the finance committee meeting.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, that was me minutes, I had it on the front.
I was just picking the date. I wasn't picking the pay period. That's what I was.
And mine's our board meeting.
The seventeenth. So it would.
The seventeenth would push it out further yet. It would push it out to the.
Does it, does it affect anything when you, the start, if we, if it would be retro to.
No, that's why I didn't want to retro it.
Is that, is that, because it's close enough to the beginning.
Yes.
And does it cause any headaches on pay outside?
Not at all.
Okay.
So we have two options. We could do the motion and pass it this evening, or we can wait until the regular board meeting.
Yeah, but I would recommend if everybody's.
I mean, we've gone through this in a couple of past meetings. We approved the agenda as written in the discussion meeting, so what's on the agenda was on it. So there's no motion on the agenda.
Well, fine, but, but I did say right up front that we wanted to do.
Before we adopted, before we adopted it.
Yeah.
Instead, we can't read the motion.
I, I just think, listen, this is, if we're going to do this, we need to do it sooner than later, because we meet up like yesterday. And so, I mean, I certainly wait. I appreciate the, the motion, but I don't know if there's anything controversial about doing it tonight.
It's not about controversial. We said a press man a couple of special meetings ago that we would, once it's approved, and you didn't say anything specific, you all want to do this one. I'm just trying to be consistent with, we can't pick and choose how we're going to enforce the rule.
Okay.
I guess I would recommend for every special meeting moving forward, that the board keeps the option open of putting a resolution on. It could be voted up or down.
Okay.
Based on a conversation that we're having, but.
If we look at terminology on this agenda, the only thing that I thought we were discussing by the written is we're discussing calendar. The rest look like they're open for adjust fees, which means we could adjust them tonight. And the calendar is a discussion, substitution, conversation, it doesn't say discuss. So by what the wording is on the consent agenda, I can believe that we could act on any of the items that are here except for the calendar.
Truthfully, or we can just backdate it to eleven-thirteenth or the seventeenth. It's not going to affect.
Yeah, that would be.
I mean, honestly, it's, it's going to be fine.
That's what a normal agenda would look like.
I'm just, but realistically, if we do the seventeenth, we could just, when we vote on it on the seventeenth, we could just say.
Yeah, actually, that's a good.
We just have to put the dates, and we hire employees like this, we just can't pay them until the board approves, so it'll be fine.
I think that's a, actually.
I mean, we hired teachers in the summer, and they and sometimes they're not, sometimes we hire teachers and they start working before.
This can't be paid over.
We can't pay them, we'll have to board through them, so it'll be fine, so we don't want to do that.
Yeah, so if we, if we, on the seventeenth, put a motion to backdate the thirteenth, I think that's.
Yeah, I just wonder, sorry for confusing it with eleven-five. I was just turning a date in there, I thought that, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, you could retro it back to that fifth date, the date of November fifth, if we wanted to.
Oh, that's.
You could back it.
You could go back as far as you want.
Well, now once payroll's gone, payroll, yeah, but you're good, you're good, yeah.
You're good. Okay, are we done?
So the only other item, I'll just go in the rest of the finance committee. So the only other item, I'll, I'll just go in the rest of the finance committee, uh, meeting, we talked about, uh, a band payment for the press box. Uh, wanting to defer that, Jane's giving some additional information that we're going to discuss at next finance meeting, uh, kind of the payment history and whether that and in full payment and stuff, and we'll look at that, and now that we have all the information and, uh, have a recommendation for that. And those were the only three items that we discussed in the finance committee.
So are we ready to move to the calendar discussion for years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
Yeah.
So I know, Mr. Kennedy, you, uh, you brought this up as to discussion, I've been, I've been, uh, kind of thinking through what, what our discussion was so long ago. So could you maybe help refresh what you, what you're kind of leading the discussion?
From what I remember is, is we were just, um, centered around the discussion of the start date. Um, I believe that, that, I don't have it in front of me, but it's like around the seventeenth or something of August.
Both years have the seventeenth, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and, and our discussion was centered around the reason we had moved it up to the middle of the month in the past, and I, I can't recall how many years ago that was done. Or how many years we've done in the middle of August as a start date. Um, but some of the justifications behind that were centered around two things from my memory. Uh, the first was the aspect of the snow days. Um, when we were, you know, required to have a certain number of days in session, which has since changed to hours. Um, and my recollection was that the other aspect was centered around the state testing aspect and having a few more weeks of um, instruction in front of the students prior to the state testing dates. And a lot of our conversation was centered around, well, now that we've changed to hours, um, that that point is moved, and from the state testing aspect, we don't have any data to support the fact that those additional two weeks of instruction in front of the student has improved our test scores as a district overall, so. You know, my, my question, or why I felt we needed to discuss this a little bit more is we have a a very flexible amount of hours to work with here. Um, and to potentially look at, at moving that start date back, because if we have that start date on the seventeenth, then really it's the beginning of August that our parents are starting to prepare for the school year. Um, because we have, you know, the open houses, the meet the teachers, the, the locker, and combo, et cetera, so we're really starting somewhere around the first week of August. So that was my recollection.
So I'll end of that, um, Keith summed it up good, but with all those, so why couldn't we start like, say, August twenty-ninth, use that first week before the holiday to do all that preliminary work that we do? And then just hit the calendar, school year rolling, essentially then with, on the new education, the week of the holiday. What prevents that, or what we lose by doing that?
So I, I jokingly, every year when, or every couple of years, a lot of times with, with Terry and Miss Hook and, and others say that, you know, one of the things in my job that I like the least is the development of the calendar. Because based on your opinion, your family situation, um, whether you like summers, winters, whether you like Christmas break or holiday, or, uh, spring break. Um, all those things come in, and you, you have a different opinion, you know, of what the calendar is, and I think this discussion is just very similar to that, so let me just uh, tag off a couple of things that's, that, that comes up every time that we want to discuss this. Everything in a calendar is a give and take, okay? So one of the, one of the things you got to think about is, um, the breaks and the length of breaks you want as a district, okay? You need to think about, uh, exams, the first semester exams, and how much time prior to the first semester exams you want. And, uh, the ending date, I don't know if you remember a few years back, we did a, we did a survey of the community, and the survey of the community wanted all aspects of the calendar, they wanted to start later, like you're suggesting, they wanted to end earlier. They wanted to have a full spring break and two weeks at Christmas. So the only way to make that happen is take our school day and extend each day, which isn't what we're looking at doing at this point in time. So, um, th- those are just some of the big barriers to, to changing the calendar, so.
Okay, how, I'm just going to go.
Yeah.
So how many extra hours of build in, right, this calendar with us studying this topic?
Look at your sheet here and go to the second page. Um, and again, remember, our, ours, there's, there's extra hours, but we have in our union teacher contracts, the number of days that we employ our staff to work, so that's also part of this, or is part of this calendar. Uh, it's a big piece of that, so just because we have extra hours when they change, the reason they changed to the hours is because they got sick of dealing with the calamity days. Uh, about six, seven, eight years ago, we had those enormous winters, you know, we had seventeen days off one year and fifteen days off another. And so after that, they were, the state was so tired of all of us calling them up and saying, we need more waiver days, we need more waiver days, so they just said.
And you know, one more time, I'll put that, is there anything new going forward, discussion with the state that now that everyone's good with remote learning, that's nobody's a thing of the past, and you'll be able to still count that as a school day by tiny work and having the kids do stuff?
Well, that's more of a law and a negotiated agreement issue than a state issue. So, uh, if your negotiated agreement with your teachers and other, you know, with your O C staff allowed for that, then that would be permissible under our remote learning plan that we submitted with the state.
Would that be moving forward even like outside of a COVID situation, would that hold true?
Again, oh, well, uh, as long as the state allows us to continue to have this on file remote learning plan that we can always go to, I, I'm not, I'm not so sure that's going to remain, and maybe.
Well, I know it could, yeah, but.
I haven't heard it's not going to remain, I mean, it hasn't been in discussion, I, I see what you're asking, it's new this year's first time. Um, my guess is.
If you make snow days altogether, because you still do learning remotely, uh, will state.
Well, the, 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 uh, yeah, I mean, th- those are, again, that's a negotiated agreement piece, I, 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 I know exactly what you're saying, other districts are having those conversations, but. Um, but yeah, so these hours, to your point of snow days, is really to help accommodate the snow days. So it's, it's how much wiggle, how much cushion do you want as a, as a board? Uh, the other pieces I was going to mention in calendars that we, we take in is the amount of P D days, uh, that we want to provide our staff in terms of the calendar. And so that takes up some of the days that, again, if, if we decide, and that's, that's, you know, that's not a mandate that we have the, uh, different P D days, but it's.
Is there a negotiated item, or is that just?
It's just a necessity, yeah, workdays are for staff, for teachers, uh, the, the teacher.
So we could have fifteen.
Correct me if I'm saying anything wrong here, Mrs. Hook, so I, I, I.
We could have double that if we wanted to.
Sure we could, as long as we meet the minimum hours, correct.
Okay.
Correct, so I, I, I'm not opposed to looking at that, but essentially how it kind of works is, you know, the board, I, like I did, I sit down with, with Terry and the calendar group, sometimes we have some of the teaching staff, some of the administrators, and we have these things, there's different opinions within our, our own leadership about what's the right calendar, the wrong calendar. At the end of the day, I don't know how we could move up by two weeks, our calendar, and still have semester exams at the, at the Christmas break, which is what our, we moved just a couple of years ago because the, the families did not like ending the year, you're, you're shaking your head as a mom here, and then have all this break, then come back and have to take an exam or week in there, or two weeks into school. Because you just, your mind isn't in that. And so we, we changed that back.
We started the year late this year, obviously, I mean, I know it's a unique and different situation, but shouldn't we push back our start date a few weeks?
We, we pushed back, not, we did not change the calendar in any official way. We, what we did though is basically because of the flexibility we had, is we just had our teachers, um, work with students that first week in a unique way that wasn't like direct instruction.
Right, right, we still started on the contract.
Yeah, so.
For the, for the teacher.
And go ahead and confirm.
And I understand all of those circumstances that go into the negotiation of the calendar. I guess my point was, is I think it's, you know, prior to approving the calendar, I think it may be it's time for us to revisit a survey out to the parents in, in looking at, because I still consistently hear in the community, um, of wanting to, to start later in the year. And, you know, the reasonings that I was always given behind why we started so early in the year was mainly centered around the state report card aspect. Um, and, and like I said, we don't have the data to support that it has been beneficial, those additional two weeks of instruction, because in all honesty, the first, you know, two weeks, even, well, the first, I won't say two weeks, the first week isn't really direct instruction anyways, um, when, when the kids are in school, so. I'm recommending that we, we maybe just do another, another survey prior to approving the calendar to get, get our community's feedback. Take all of those aspects into account, um, on if we start earlier, we would have to start later, or, uh, end later, correct? I mean, that's essentially what you're saying, because we still have to fit all of the ancillary aspects into.
Keith, one thing that I've experienced working with the union and being on the board for many years is the fact that there are so many variables with a survey, because we're dealing with the educational aspect, we're dealing, as, as Hal mentioned before, we're dealing with people, parents wanting vacations, we're dealing with athletic schedules, with students being in school while sports are taking place. We're dealing with trying to get the exams accomplished at the middle of the year, that's the main reason that we started much earlier in August, was because our high school wanted to be able to take that exam and the semester prior to the parents going on vacation. You know, I think everybody would like to have a hundred and eighty-five days straight at school and get it over with with no vacations, and we wouldn't have everything drawn out. But there have been so many surveys for so long, and there's been many committees working with these calendars, and I'm not saying we shouldn't look at it, Keith, I'm not going against that. But I'm saying I believe our administration, our union, and our parents have been involved with almost every single calendar that's came out. That, um, and, and I know you're a younger generation, you're, you're new on the board just a few years, you know, um, and you're looking into this stuff, and you're trying to do the best that you can to help your constituents out. Um, surveys are good, but we're going to have to develop several choices of calendars prior to this and have a justification for each one of those calendars that we're going to put forth before we put a survey out. I mean, just asking parents, um, haphazard questions in a survey is going to give us such a ball of yarn that we have to unravel in order to make a calendar, it's going to be really very difficult.
Well, but I, I guess from a haphazard, we understand what the union wants, right? We understand what our administration wants and what the teachers want. But I think the, the only thing that we're missing is what do the parents want, do you, do you see what I'm saying, Mike, like where?
Yeah, I understand, but if, if you have children that, um, if you have a husband who works in the Toledo area and gets a vacation in a certain time, and you have a wife who works in a, a different occupation, they're looking at vacation times, they're looking at, and, and we, we never used to have, um, our calendars scheduled out so far, we've done this with the parents years ago, where we're trying to get these calendars two and three years out so that they can make cruise, cruise assignments, which don't happen during the COVID, obviously, but uh, people are planning ahead, and, and these calendars have to be out several years that we're going to change, so it's not going to be immediate reinforcement. Um, actually, the calendars that are here are, were probably, this, is this our next contract period, that's already been, the ones that we're looking at, or is this, are we up for contract now? For calendars?
Um, the first one is for next year, which is under this contract, and the second one would be the first year of the subsequent contract.
Okay, but have they already been approved, both of these?
The two, the two in front of you have gone through all the processes that we've done for years and years and years.
So, so our next change would be twenty-three, twenty-four.
Correct.
I mean, because these are already in place, they went through all of the hardships and the work and the fighting, and, and including the parents, Keith, I mean, this is not just haphazard as it's gone through the time.
These two calendars use the result of a parent's survey that, that we did the last time.
Were you able to hear that, Keith?
No.
Um, Terry said that these were a result of a parent's survey, we, prior to these calendars that we have in front of us.
Yeah, the, the, the biggest change, oh, excuse me, the biggest change that came out of the surveys, and I can, I'll dig that up, Keith, we can take a look at it, I, 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 it was just, it wasn't all that long ago, but it's been at least two, three years, uh, at least. And, and again, I just want to reiterate, I know exactly what the community is going to say. I, I mean, I, I know what they're going to say, they want a late start, they want to end early, they want all their breaks, and it's, 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 it's just what they're going to, because they want what fits their situation. Um, and I'm, I, I, I would, I'm, I'm perfect, listen, I work year round, right? The calendar, I, I, it doesn't matter to me, but you know what, hits in June, you think anybody wants to do anything after Memorial Day in June?
So if we look at this though, we can easily not week off by adjusting the meeting date to one third quarter. I mean, again, business world and mostly, we do one leadership development, one per quarter. Any other competencies and other things that nurses and clinical people need to do. It's unknown time, or we pay for them to take, we pay for them to take the training, need to do it during.
If, if you're suggesting that we eliminate P D days, that is something we can do and shave some days off, absolutely. Don't know if we should, don't know if I want to recommend that, but it is absolutely something we can do.
With the, with the changes that come down the pipe every year for educators, we really need to keep up with our P D. And, and those, those exams before Christmas break are crucial, they are absolutely crucial. Um, as a teacher, I always went back last week in July, first week in August, because it takes that long to get everything together. Those two weeks that you're referring to in the elementary level, and that, because that's where I was, are really spent in training the kids what they need to be doing, just like we did with, um, the beginning of this school year with the hybrid. What the rules are, and those things are so crucial to be able to get into the learning piece. I, I'm all for taking a survey, or, or if that's what everybody decided they want to do, but those two weeks are crucial, you may not think so, but as a teacher, I'm telling you, they are.
Well, why don't, why don't I dig up the old survey, get that out to the board, take a look at the questions that we had, does that sound like it, Keith? I can, I mean, I can certainly look at what it would look like without the P D days, I don't know, we are, I, I mean, I know we've done this, I, you know, worked with Terry and others, it's been a while, I mean, uh, we've actually, because of COVID, kind of put this on the delay, I mean, normally this would have been approved a while ago. It's just one of those things that didn't happen because of the, the COVID situation. I do feel bad about that, but, um, circle back and take a look at, at, and with a fine tooth comb at our P D days. Uh, let, let me ask this question, um, do we still want to end on Memorial Day? Is the feeling like Keith or, or to the board, that you would rather go in June than end on Memorial Day? Or the, you know, that weekend usually?
Honestly, the, the, the conversations, and this is, I, I, I kind of remember the last survey we did. The conversations I've had over the four, five years, five years that I've been on the board now have never centered around the end date, it's always centered around this stuff.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that, actually, I mean, that's, uh, it did center around the end date, uh, there for a while, because, um, um, it, it, seniors were just kind of, you know, gone for so long before graduation, and it was out even further because of the school, and I'm trying to remember some other reasons. Then we would have graduation, uh, and then we moved, then we had graduation on Memorial Day weekend at times, and then that one, people didn't like that because it took away from the holiday weekend, so then we went away from that and moved it to the following week, just trying to, I got a whole survey to, to, to remember all the exact. So let me do that, let me pull a survey, get it out, share, share the results with everybody, hopefully I still have that, I'm sure I do in my, my files. And then, uh, if there's a way we can shave off a couple of days, um, and it makes sense, you know, then I, I'll bring that back to the board, and we can have, you know, I don't want to go too long, because I know parents want to know their calendar, for sure.
Absolutely.
Um, but, uh, if that sounds like, uh, at least the next step for tonight, and, and then I could, you know, share at the next meeting maybe on the seventeenth, what those might look like.
Sounds good.
I mean, that sound like at least a place to start? And I could just think that may be part of my superintendent's report, or, or just old business type of stuff, okay?
That works for me, so we're going to do a survey and bring.
Well, we're going to, we'll review the previous survey, and then we decide if we want to.
Decide if we want to have a one, correct, thank you.
And then I can look at the P D days specifically, at, you know, because some of them fall on like Election Day, like we just had, and some of these other things that we need to keep in place for sure.
I just know my general consensus, my general thought of having the kids having gone through, how it's, uh, high school, first two weeks, last two weeks, nothing gets done. They do nothing. Generally speaking.
Yeah, I'm just saying, don't make that blanket statement, you'll make a lot of people angry.
Like high school. I disagree.
Or elementaries, you know, they're getting, we, we spend a lot of, I'll say, soft time, I'll call it.
But when you're dealing with small children, you need that time with them to build the bonds between teacher and student, to learn the rules, to learn the regulations, to learn how to go to the bathroom. There's, there's more to it than just the teaching part when you have little kids.
But when you're in kindergarten, first second, you know, after that, you bundle the routine through a year, how long does that take?
Well, then you move to.
Well, but, but again, it, it comes down to an individual, I, I'm just going to equate it to your opinion on COVID. All right, everybody's got an opinion and everybody understands from their own point of view what's, uh, important and what isn't important and education's the exact same thing. We all went to school, we all had different experiences in school. Some of us value school more than others value school, some of us value some of those, um, assignments that are a little bit more, um, open-ended, some of us can't stand those and they only want the, the, what's the purpose? I just want to know the meat and potatoes, I don't want to know any fluff. And then there's people that, you know, oh, I get overwhelmed with the over stuff, but I like that, I have, I'm just saying, Jeff, you're, you, you know, your perception of what school should be is very different from, let's say, somebody else on the board's perception of what school should be. So we cannot get into that about whether we value or not value time, it's gotta be, you know, I, we're, we, teachers are going to work 185 days in a year, we will have 185 days in the calendar, period. Now, of those 185 days, how many of those days do students attend? Well, they must at least attend up to, um, 1,001 hours for grades five through 12 and 910 hours for the younger ones. That's minimum. Anything above or down that, we would have to make up if that's what our calendar, we could literally knock off, well, what's, it, it, it's a little bit different based on the hours, but what's 156 hours divided by six and a half? That many days you could literally knock off at the intermediate, which is going to be, you know, knocking off like a month of school for kids. No one is doing that. How many?
Twenty-four days.
Twenty-four days, so we could right now for, at least at that five, six building because they're only required to be there, um, uh, there 910 hours, yeah, because, but we run them just like we do the seven through 12, so there's an excess amount of hours per the state, but we believe as educators that we need that time with kids, that's the, that's the flip side of this whole argument. But I haven't seen a single district do that. They have, we have reduced and added a couple of PD days because we had some of that flexibility over the years. Um, but listen, I, I, I understand the argument, I'm certainly not trying to say here that that isn't a feeling out there because I know it is, of course it is. You know, it's all on the value you put on the experience here in the school system. It just is, so, so I'll, 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 I'll put together, grab the survey, we'll get some options, we'll bring it back and have a little bit more discussion, but I do want to get these approved, something approved. I don't know if we can get it approved on the 17th with this, but I would say absolutely no later than the December meeting. If that's, you kind of just put that in your mind.
Okay, just like everything else, you know, we have our opinions and everybody sort thinks that there weighs the right way, we need to consider everybody, not just a few people.
Probably too many variables to change this one that's already been developed for these two cycles though. I mean, in order to change it by December, there was, there is not enough time. I think, you know, in November, we need to look at these, if these are our options without many variables, there's just not enough time. If you want to do this true, Keith, like, like you would like to, to be able to do the research and be able to adjust it, I'd say we should go for this 22, 23 year, which is only two years away, it seems like, or the 20, 23, 24.
I mean, you know, in a contract, in a, in a contract, it asks, it asks us to, um, approve calendars, you know, two, two years out, which is, I, working with Terry, we maybe could approve just one and have some more discussion on the second year. I, I don't want to speak for her at this point in time, but that's a discussion I could have with her here in between and see if we wanted to shoot to get one approved and then making an adjustment for the next one. I mean, lots of options that way. Okay, anything else on that? I know I, I, you want to click up the, uh, for me on the next one?
Yep.
Um, so my days have become, uh, just really all day, uh, which is fine because what it's doing is keeping us open, but we're, we're dealing with situations around the district, uh, with sick kids, not always COVID, because we're, right now, we are presuming everybody with any kind of symptom whatsoever of COVID is COVID, right? We have to treat it as if it's COVID first and, and hope it's not COVID, that's if I say treat it like that, meaning sending the kid home or putting, asking them to stay at home, those types of things. So, uh, have all of you seen the database up on the website so you kind of have a sense of how that's laid out? So the latest adds up tonight, we have 25, um, positive cases in our district since July. Those are broken down by 18, uh, students and seven staff members. Um, I, so that's what I update every day. I do that personally because I, I work with Miss Sexton, Sherry Sexton, our school nurse, and we talk 20 times a day and, and we making sure that our numbers are accurate and that we're talking about, there's so many moving parts to this, we don't want to make a mistake. And then on the, the last two pieces of our data are the cumulative numbers that were quarantined and are requesting to stay home because, uh, not all kids that we send home are quote quarantined, just so there's, you all know, the only person or people that can quarantine are the health departments, like, we can't quarantine, but we use the word. So what we're doing is we're, we're, we're requesting you to stay home or we're isolating you at home or I'm requesting a teacher to work from home until if they test positive and they're quarantined or they're around somebody. So I just want to make that little delineation because that's why I have quarantine or request to stay home because we got scolded by the health department for using quarantine too loosely. So, but it's an easy word to remember and I love Erica, I don't mean that in any negative way. So you can see our numbers, so basically since we started back in hybrid and before, we've had a couple of, uh, you know, we had a hot, I don't even know, hotspot's not the right word, we had cases that cropped up at Clay the first week and we'd seen them get one every day, a positive. Um, and then, uh, this week it's been Eisenhower, it's been a little bit more of a, a crop up, a spot. So, uh, who knows when next week will hold, right? This week so far, knock on wood, Clay's been grouping. Um, but I will tell you, as you've seen in my emails, um, you know, for the vast majority of these cases, they're all, uh, coming from outside our school system. Now, we did have a recent situation where we believed there, there was a, a possible, again, there's no way of knowing absolute and we don't know for absolute, but we believe there might have been a, a connection here within our buildings. Um, but again, it was isolated quickly, real quickly and dealt with within a day. So I, this is the message I keep saying in my emails to everybody is you have no idea how good you have it here in Oregon City Schools with this testing situation we have. You have no idea how good you have it with Sherry Sexton as our lead nurse and having a nurse in every building. The school principal is dealing with all this stuff in other buildings around this Lucas County. There is no way that you can do this accurately as a school administrator, there's no way. And I am watching it, I am dealing with it every day, I'm overwhelmed and I've got all these people helping me. There is no way it can happen effectively, all right? We are doing it in my estimation as good as anybody can possibly deal with the illnesses. We have a list, a master list of every kid and every staff or anybody that is ill, whether they have COVID or not, that they're ill and, and we have all our nurses supporting that. I, I am so proud of the system that we have in place. We get appalled, literally, again today from the health department and others, how well we have it. Doesn't mean we're not going to get COVID in our schools because that's everywhere. So I just, I just, I really want to make that point to you and the public that we've got our act together with this about as good as we can have it, but it doesn't mean we're not going to be affected by it. So I'm really, really proud of the COVID plan that we have in place. Now, you saw my email earlier today, there is going to be a change because of what we're doing, there are so many kids, I mean, you're talking 52, 30 to 50 kids or people a day we send to this mobile unit, unsustainable. Because on top of what we do, they do first responders, which is why the system started, to make sure our first responders are ready to go, uh, along with, uh, nursing homes and, and, and other hotspot areas in our, in our area. And, and listen, Mercy's been nothing but supportive, they just know they can't commit to their promise of, of getting there the same day now because we just, it's just humanly impossible. They're not giving up on us. They're just, they're just saying, we're going to have to take a step back with our time commitments and they are looking at some other options, okay? They're looking at some other options, let me just say that, that will still support us, but may look different because they just can't, you know, they just can't do it. So, so again, uh, they are still committed to working with us and I can't thank Matt Saper and Mercy Health and that whole crew over there enough for, for what they're doing related to that. So that's just my general overall, you know, COVID, COVID thing, you know, you've seen pictures of Clay hallway, uh, there was pictures sent to me tonight about kids, pictures of this room saying that teachers are absolutely mad, there's no way we can social distance and, you know, just bagging on us and, and, and trying to make us look bad and that's going to happen all the time. Because people who want to find something they consider wrong in this era find what they consider to be wrong, right? We've all seen it. Um, and especially during this, uh, political season, how, how rough this has gotten, we've, we've all lived it. But I will tell you that we're not going to be perfect, but we're as good as anywhere else. And our community, I personally, others on the board, wanted to bring their kids and get their kids back to school so they can learn. Don't know if it'll last all year, don't know what the next two weeks hold, but we're sure giving it our best shot and no, we are not six foot distanced here at Clay High School throughout the day. Never said we would be, never claimed we would be, um, we're distanced as maximum as we can get in most areas. Uh, does that happen every minute of the day? No, because humans are humans and kids are kids and we're going to do everything we can, but, but everyone understands the rules and I think for the most part, we're going to, you know, you see these shields out in front of you that we just finalized yesterday and putting them together, uh, with teacher volunteers, couldn't thank them enough for putting all these together. Uh, and so we have these in our classrooms, we're just rolling them out today, so, but someone took a picture and said, we don't even have them up yet. Well, we just rolled them out today, so maybe a class didn't have them up yet. Okay? So understanding. So anyways, I, I, I'll get on my editorial high, high horse there, but I guess I'm trying to defend our district and, and give you confidence that we're doing everything we can to, to keep the spread of the virus out of our schools as much as we humanly can possibly do. So are there questions that you guys are seeing or cropping up or?
Now, I guess I would just have you add that, that if the district were to change our, our, it would have to, the board would meet and have a discussion.
Absolutely, right. Unless it was, uh, like a, a, a state or county mandate where we didn't.
But just because we went in the red, we would, because sometimes assume we were just going to go back to remote.
Yep.
Going remote does require a board action, so even a, a change from what we do now, the board would get together and discuss.
Yeah, I don't think at any point, at, at this point, we would not have to have really solid discussion about what to do next because, um, people will come accustomed to having their kids come to school five days a week, right? You know, I look at Heather because she's got a kid, I know Jeff's got a kid, you know, you've got students in the, in the, in the school system and all of you were excited to have that happen and which is the vast majority. Um, but like the four areas that I said, uh, you know, which is a government mandate, that we closed, we can't staff our, our buildings, um, we have like a massive COVID outbreak in one of our schools or the district, most likely would be in one of our schools out of the whole district. Uh, or I think, you know, there, uh, uh, if and when we were to ever go purple, I think we have to have that discussion, I think everyone will be having those discussions on what does that mean? Now, I thought we were going to have more counties in purple last week, but it didn't happen before the election. I'm, I'm wondering if it'll happen tomorrow, uh, when we get the updates.
How is it possible one school may be having an outbreak and we shut it down? Is that a local decision or is that the other?
Yeah, well, it could be either. I, 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 I know they monitor us because they know every positive situation we have. So now I have not seen them do that, but except for one private, um, uh, Christian school, about, about three weeks ago was shut down for two weeks. Don't, don't know if that was voluntary or if that was mandated or a combination of working, I don't know the details behind it. Um, I, I heard rumor today that Fremont is, is looking at that, I don't know if anybody has heard that. Uh, but again, a two week shutdown where just let it all clear out, you know, that 14 day, so if we were to go that route, it would be two weeks and that seems to be the, the 14 day, so it, it, it gets very confusing, but people are, get mixed up between the 14 day, the positive test, the 10 day and all that stuff. So let me just give a two second primer. So if you have COVID, okay, then you're going to be isolated for up to 10 days, um, or symptom-free for like 24 hours. Does that make sense? So, okay, so if you, if you are, it's, let me back up, so you and I get confused, but when you are, when you are exposed to somebody, okay? When you are exposed to somebody who is positive, okay? Mrs. Molnar is a positive case, we were together for 15 minutes, um, straight consecutive minutes within six feet. I am going to be quarantined for 14 days because I was with a positive individual, okay? Regardless of I get tested or not. Does that make sense? I can get sick on the second day, I can get tested, okay, so I'm exposed today, I get tested tomorrow, I'm negative on the third day, I could be really sick on the fourth day, the fifth day, the sixth day or all the way up to the 14th day. So you do not get to come back to school, which is what we do.
No symptoms at all and still be positive.
Or, yeah, or, yeah, but we know you're positive. We know you're positive, okay? So that's the difference. Now, if you're sick, okay? And the first thing we do if you're sick, okay? Chain's out, I'm out, anybody that was within 16, uh, six feet for 15 minutes is out because you're sick. We don't know if you're positive or not, you may have strep throat, you may have some other thing going on. We're out until you test negative and then I'm back. So I'm isolated only for most likely up to 10 days if you don't know, but most likely if you get a negative test, we're back in a day, that happens a lot for two days. That's the point of this mobile testing unit is to get our kids back because the vast majority are not positive. They're negative, but they're sick. Does that, does that make sense? Well, people are very confused on that because they think if I've been exposed to a positive and they go get a test and parents are getting very upset when we tell them, no, your kid can't come back for 14 days. I mean, daily, we're getting arguments about this, okay? So I'm, I'm, I'm asking families and parents to please, please, you know, we're not trying to trick you, we're not trying, trying to do anything but keep the kids safe and I know the 14 days is an inconvenience, trust me, I get it. You know, right now, that's the rule, unless they change the rule, we got to follow it. So.
And that's not a local rule that they're telling.
That's the state.
State rule, okay.
Health order rule. Yeah, because we have that much of state and, uh, I mean, a very, very, very irate individual. Uh, I mean, these, it brings out the, the best and the worst again. Uh, but Sherry Sexton handles it with grace, with care, with love, I mean, she, she, she does the majority of those conversations and she's just amazing, she's just amazing, we are so lucky. So I know that's a lot, maybe a lot more than you wanted, but, uh, you know, have confidence in this, we're going to keep trying, doesn't mean we won't have outbreaks, we may, may be tomorrow, but, uh, we're going to do everything we can to prevent it.
So for the kids that have to be out for the 14 days?
Yes.
What are their options as far as learning is concerned?
Yep, so we're, we're essentially treating them like they're, they're, they're just out sick, out with a broken leg, out with a situation that we've done before and they, uh, but the teacher's responsibility is to connect them, get them work and stay connected to the classes. So the teacher's expectation is not to Zoom with them every day, to not do live instruction with them every day, but their, their responsibility is to continue to work with them and to be flexible and try to get them to work and certainly answer questions, communicate with them, I'm not saying don't communicate. Um, it's, it's very unique to the situation because so many of the kids, um, Except for those that have been exposed to a positive, which hasn't been that many, just so everybody knows, the vast majority of these kids are back in two or three days because the tests are negative. So the vast majority, not all, but the vast majority are back in just a couple of days. So we're going to do our best, again, muddling through it, hoping it works, we're trying to do our darndest not to penalize kids in any way or staff when they're quarantined or sick. So. Anything else on that?
I would like to give a shout out to the Clay cooks.
Okay.
And the maintenance staff, and I think a few volunteers who put all these.
Oh, yeah.
Together, they are a bear to put together, you should see the hands of the people who were putting them together, they dig into your fingers and make you bleed, so. I really would like especially thanks to.
Absolutely, those people stepped up, came out to our warehouse, and along with Dean Sanders setting it all up, he out, he was out there for hours and hours as well. Mr. Jurisky here at the high school, his teacher team worked all day yesterday, also along with the cooks, along with a lot of the maintenance staff. Just like you said, fantastic effort, everybody stepping up, I, I haven't found anybody that's not.
Okay, anything else for the good of the board? Executive session? Anything? Anything for the discussion? Okay, the next regular meeting is the seventeenth at six. Lee, I have a motion to close this meeting, please?
A move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zivinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Keith, thank you, I'm glad that worked out.
Yes, thank you so much, guys.
Yep.